Who will our next generation be? What will they achieve? At Proctor Public Schools, we see great things in the future. As we create an environment to educate, engage, and inspire our students to seek adventure, gain knowledge, and make a difference. What do we see in the next generation? We see greatness. Proctor Public Schools don't just plan to graduate. Graduate with a plan.
Good evening. I'll call to order the regular school board meeting of Monday, November 8th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, let's go ahead and do roll call then.
McDonald.
Here.
Farmeter.
Here.
Peterson. Here. Pocrenet.
Here.
Hoodgornet.
Here.
Shelton. Ward.
Here.
Student liaison member Sidney Hadrick and Sophia Morin Swanson. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five or four, excuse me, is an approval of the agenda as presented in your electronic packet. There have been no additions that I can see. We are looking for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion by Lynn. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding our agenda tonight?
Should we be moving consent agenda number 15 under individual items?
Yeah, we can do that. Thank you for that, Amy. So item number 10, 15, two items for individual action.
Got it.
All right. Do you support that change to the motion, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. So with that change to the motion, Lynn still has a motion on the table? Jim, support? Still?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. With a motion and a second with that change? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? And that motion carries. Number five is an approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting of October 25th, 2021. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved by Amy.
Thank you very much, Amy. Is there a second?
Aunt Farmeter.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item number six is an approval of the minutes of the special school board meeting from November 1st, 2021. Looking for a motion.
I'll get a motion, Jim.
Heard Joe first, if that's okay. Jim, support?
Okay, I'll second it then, that's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. With a motion and a second, does anyone have any questions regarding those minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item number seven is the finance report. We will be looking for a motion to approve the payment of bills dated October 22nd, 2021, and November 8th, 2021, in the amount of $204,546.04 covering checks 111205 through 111341. Looking for a motion.
So moved by Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Is there a second? I can second that. Does anyone have any questions on the finance report tonight? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to commendations and congratulations. The board would like to congratulate Tyler Bloom for being selected as Proctor's nominee for Education Minnesota 2022 Teacher of the Year program. The board would also like to congratulate Lowell Harnell for being selected as the Girls' Section 7AA Cross Country Coach of the Year. And the board would also like to congratulate Josh Knight, Lizzie Harnell, and Della Bettendorf for qualifying for state in cross country, which was held on Saturday, November 6th. Are there any other commendations and congratulations that we should mention tonight for timeliness?
I would just add about the drama department. Did their performance this past weekend, the Addams Family Musical. And they did a great job, so congratulations to the drama department. That was no small feat to pull off, and they did a very nice job.
Thank you, Kim. Okay. We will move on to number nine, which is public participation. The school board meeting is a meeting that occurs in the public. It is not a public meeting. The public participation portion of our meeting is a time where we offer an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Once we move from public participation, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the board. As a general rule, the board will listen to members of the public but will not comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. The board will not engage in dialogue, though any board member may ask questions. Please do not include the names of Proctor Public School employees, their title, or building location in your remarks for your own legal protection and the legal rights of our staff. Issues related to school district employees can be made in writing and can be directed to the Human Resources Department at Proctor Public Schools. Public comment will not be allowed for situations surrounding recent concerns and investigation of possible student misconduct. As you know, because student and employee data is protected under the Minnesota Data Privacy Act and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, we can't, Tim won't be commenting further on the completed police investigation involving our football program. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Speakers may not roll their time to another speaker. Please begin your presentation by stating your name, including the spelling, and who you represent if applicable. In the spirit of fairness to all participants, we request that you respect this format. Thank you for taking the time today to attend this meeting and to share your concerns. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the board during public participation? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Item number 10. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda less number 15 as presented in your electronic and written packet.
So moved by Amy.
There is a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn. Does anyone have any questions regarding our consent agenda tonight? Personnel items and looks like winter coaches. Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed?
And I will abstain.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure I keep track of a couple things here. Okay. We'll move on then to item number 11, items for individual action. Item A. Approve the first reading of suggested district policy changes, which includes Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity, Policy 406, Public and Private Personnel Data, Policy 413, Harassment and Violence in Form, and Policy 425, Staff Development. We're looking for a motion to approve the first reading of these policy changes.
So moved, Bill.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. These policies were reviewed at the policy committee meeting and then brought forward. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item number B is a little bit lengthy. I'll try to make it a little bit, I'll try to condense it as much as I can. Adopt a resolution establishing combined polling places for certain multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. So this is a resolution that we're required to move forward due to statute. It lists combined polling places of the Proctor Area Community Center, Kenosha Town Hall, Solway Town Hall, Grand Lake Town Hall, as our district polling places. Pursuant to the statutes, the polling places will remain open for voting during school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7 o'clock in the morning and 8:00 p.m. Is there anything I need to say out loud regarding this resolution at all? Okay. Does anyone have any question? I'll look for a motion. I'll give the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions at all regarding this long resolution?
An annual thing that we do? We implement? Okay. And per state statute? Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's a resolution that requires a roll call. When you are ready, Lynn, go ahead.
McDonald.
Yes.
Farmeter.
Yes.
Peterson, yes. Pocrenet.
Yes.
Hoodgornet.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Unanimously approved. Thank you.
Okay. And the addition of item number 11C, which comes from the consent agenda, which will be to approve the recommendation to hire Lynn Peterson into the assessment specialist position effective November 1st, 2021. I'll make that motion.
Second by Amy.
Thank you very much, Amy. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstained?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 12 already then, items for discussion and information. We'll go ahead with the superintendent update from John.
Hope you got your clocks turned back correctly? Yeah? No snappus?
I'm all worried that I was going to be late or early for something. Am I the only one that, I can't see the superintendent update in the packet.
Oh, I haven't found it yet either. I don't know if there was a part two.
It's not there, okay. I'm just making sure I'm not crazy. In the second one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll find it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still have to set my clock. A lot of things going on across the district as usual. Thanks. We're just exchanging pens. My God. Phrenology, that class of Rob Marone's continues to generate a lot of excitement for our kids. And they're looking at mushrooms. And some of that mushroom footage got onto our new commercial that's being aired right now for school closures. Pretty cool stuff. Fifth grade just completed a two-and-a-half-day adventure in Osprey Wild Environmental Learning Center, and that also is a Pike Lake project. And then Pike Lake Physical Education students have been utilizing the school force as a running course. So we're trying to use our school force and our outdoor learning environments as much as possible. Julie Leicher just transferred from Bayview Elementary over to Jedlica Middle School. And I stopped and saw her. I think she's found herself a new home, and she's pretty happy. So I just want to congratulate Julie Leicher on this pretty big change for her, moving into middle school. Ninth grade art students are studying Impressionism. They also were featured in the WDIO filming that took place. And then last but not least, I just want to mention again Tyler Bloom being named Teacher of the Year for 2021-22. Tyler's done so many things for our district as far as career in technical education and a Perkins Grant, and he's led so many different initiatives, and especially was instrumental in doing some things related to COVID relief. So he's done an outstanding job for us, and I'm really proud of him. Management and leadership, I attended Northeast Services Cooperative Board of Directors meeting. They meet either in person or virtually in Mountaineer. Gina Cole and I attended a presentation of BoardWorks, which is a supplementary curriculum program for K-12 teachers, so we'll be looking a little bit more closely at that. We are moving to Aptigie, which is a new company that will produce both our webpage and our live feed information on a brand-new app, and we'll be promoting that next week with, maybe even at the end of this week, with some new promotional information. So the exciting thing is that, I think you're really going to like it. What we're going to have to do is tell all of our residents to, hey, we have a new app for you to download. It's free, and it's available as of this week on the App Store and on Google Play. And you just search it by Proctor Public Schools Minnesota. And then we'll have to take the Proctor ISD 704 off the Google Play and App Store, so it's not confusing. It's white, by the way, if you're going to download it. A little bit different from the green one. That also will be the vehicle that we'll be using to send emergency notices. From an administrative point of view and standpoint, we'll be sending that. So we'll have a new webpage, a new app, and a new vehicle for which we will be using to send information and push information out to our families. We did schedule an emergency weather notification. Everybody get their call? I did not. I freaked out. I mean, I said, are you kidding me? And then I contacted a few people, and they received theirs. What happened was, we moved our district from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile, and T-Mobile gave us a much better deal incentive-wise. They also provided new phones. And I was helping Scott Fitzsimmons, our technology guy, transferring his phone over. And T-Mobile changed Scott's phone number and all of his information to mine. And suddenly, my phone became his, and my phone was disabled. And somehow, that disabled phone number got pushed to campus. And so I wasn't receiving anything. So I figured that out on Monday. But evidently, everybody else got their notice, and so that's a good thing. I met with Tanya today. This is the first time that she'll ever be dealing with school closures, and we have new transportation directors. We have a lot of new things happening. Generally, we speak to Duluth, Hermantown, sometimes Superior, and then I'm the spokesperson for our area with Carlton County Schools. So I'll be connecting with Cloquet. They do things differently, though, because it's different. You know, it doesn't take much, these microclimates caused by, Lake Superior really changes the dynamics, which, you know, we need to make decisions about weather. So we'll just keep our eye on that, and we'll see what happens with Tanya this year. I think it'll be good. I did connect with Pike Lake Tool House Supervisor, who does all of our plowing, Gordy Halverson. I, for years, I've just had the wrong number. I had the old supervisor of plows, and invariably, I just called the number on my phone and, John, I'm in Florida, you gotta call Gordy. And so this year, I mean, I called Gordy, and we exchanged phone numbers. So those are really important phone calls to make, you know, at 5:00 in the morning. You know, what are you going to do with plows? So that's well underway. I attended MSBA legal workshop regarding transgender rights in schools. And, you know, staying up on that case law is really, really important. Our operations committee met with Ed Minnesota in a meet and confer, and I think we had another meeting. I think Jen's going to talk a little bit about that later. And I attended the MAS A Professional Development Opportunities, engaging your school board in the conversation. As far as transportation goes, we had an opportunity to look at brand-new seating in the auditorium. And Lynn, I don't know if you got a chance to sit on those, but I think you did with Julia. And, you know, those seats are pretty nice, you know. I, pretty expensive to take in and out, but we'll get it figured out. Right, Steve? We're also working with the city of Proctor on safe routes to school, especially as it deals with the new project that's happening on Second Street. It's an ideal time for us to talk about our parking lots and walking paths to the school because there aren't any. And so Steve met with Jess Rich and myself just to start the initial conversations of that. So those are some of the things that are happening in our school district and around the district. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you talked about downloading the new app. Will the old one be functioning at all once you do the new one for those who don't transfer over right away?
Yeah, well, you won't get any information pushed to it, no.
Okay. And then what's the pit at Pike Lake? What's the pit?
The...
It said...
The fire pit.
Oh, the...
Didn't that put fire pit?
It just says the pit, and I'm thinking of like a gravel pit.
No, well, there's a picture there. No, yeah, that...
Yeah, it's the Taj.
Yeah.
Yeah. The fire pit, okay.
Oh, I kind of skipped over that a little bit, didn't I?
Yeah. I just thought maybe there was a new pit that was dug out there.
Have you seen that fire?
I've been out there, yes, several times. I've seen it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I was out there for the inaugural fire. It's, Mark Hughes likes fires, so...
Nice.
Are you waving to me? Oh. For God's sake, I'm losing my mind. I think there's a... I thought there was a window behind, I thought there was a window behind me. Wait a second, wait a second. I don't have anything else.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions, other questions for John regarding this superintendent update? Okay. We'll move on then to an update on COVID-19. Do you have anything from Audrey or Aubrey? Excuse me.
You know, I shared what we had from Aubrey in my newsletter. Our infection rates are still kind of plateaued, and they're plateaued pretty high for our region, Duluth, Proctor, Hermantown. Up north and in the central part of St. Louis County, Carlton County, Aiken County, those numbers are really high there. So we're doing better than most, but we could do better. As far as vaccinations go, 5-11-year-olds now can be vaccinated. I know that Duluth had partnered with the Department of Health. I think they took five of the major areas that have the biggest school populations and did some clinics there. We have a planned clinic here with St. Luke's on November 23rd and December 14th. We just haven't confirmed the date, so hopefully those folks who want to bring their kids in, what we'd like to see is 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock in this room. And then that would put all those kids who are able to come with their parents to be fully vaccinated by the time Christmas break is over.
Thanks for making that something that's available local. I know there are lots of families who are trying to scramble and figure out where to go and how to get there, so...
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions at all from anyone? No?
Just the detour on Second. I got news out to everybody I could. I know that some of the TV stations are running our PSA to, you know, come down this way. I'm a little disappointed that people are discovering my secret way to work. That Kirkus Street is an amazing road. It's driven a little fast these days, too. I don't know if you noticed, but everybody going to the concert tonight have to come this way, and that's why you're seeing a lot of traffic early going to our high school band concert.
I noticed it wasn't quite down at 7:00 this morning, a little later. And then, did I see it was open? I didn't see the barricades up this afternoon. I don't know. They're up again? Okay, because I looked down there, I'm like, oh dear, what happened? So, all right. Well, the week is fine.
Yeah. I drive my vehicle through, no problem.
Of course, of course. All right. Item number 12C, superintendent search. Thank you again to you all for responding to my Google form with looking for a day that we can have our initial planning meeting. Looked like the best day was going to be the day that we have our board meeting just beforehand, so hopefully that works out. We'll feed you. I talked to Lori, and I said, we're going to have people here all night. I think we need to feed everyone, so we'll have something to eat for everyone. But we'll meet from 4:00 to 6:00 or so, and then we'll have a break in the action for anyone to do anything, and then start our meeting here at 7:00 as per usual. In the meantime, Barb has been working with Lori to get information for our brochure, we'll say, and Steve's been helping with that as well, just getting district-specific information. I'm trying to think, Steve, of the things that she was asking for us. Could you just...
Well, it's just things like your enrollment, a little bit about the school board members, how many square miles, just kind of the common, very broad things. But the other thing that was really interesting is, it gave you a chance to brag about your district. And I'll be very open. Lori and I looked at each other and says, let's give this to John, because she does it so well, and John wrote a very effective paper. Here's the things that we're very proud of with the district. And you'll see some of those, but it's just a really very informational, you know, what's your budget? What's your fund balance?
Yeah.
A thousand and a dozen things like that.
The district office was quite prepared for that, because I think they had that turned around in a day to Barb, and so today she reached out and just asked for a few more pieces of information. She wants to get our color. She wants to get her color green correct. So Steve will help with that tomorrow. Amber's covering for Lori this week, so I'll just let them take care of it tomorrow since they work. And then five districts of the like size, and Steve has that information readily available. Most of them might be around here, I'm sure. But we do that comparison quite a bit, actually, in many of our comparative studies that we do. So they'll take care of that. And she thinks we should have a brochure, you know, ready to proofread and send out as soon as we all give the thumbs up on it. So questions at all? Other than that, I don't know what the meeting will look like. Is she coming up? She's going to be virtually. Lee will be here with us.
Okay.
She'll log in virtually and be part of it that way. Yeah, I mean, November got very busy very quick for MSBA. I was really surprised. We had a handful of dates to choose from. So I'm really glad that we moved and had our special meeting and just kinda kept going because otherwise, we'd be stuck in a week-before-Christmas conundrum and everyone really busy.
Just gonna add a comment to that. Thank you to everybody behind the scenes that have been pushing, moving that forward. It's been moving along at a really good pace. So, yeah, I think that's good for our district.
Does anyone have any questions at all, other than where we're at? Okay, item number 12D, Boys Swimming Co-op with ESCO. Is that my friend Jo or my friend Amy?
I guess it's me. I was...so basically, we only have two boys on the swimming team, and ESCO wants to co-op with us, which would allow us to have our swim team. So we talked about the pros and cons, and the committee is in favor of moving forward with the co-op.
It...
The reason we don't have it on an item for action, because Anthony is trying to find out exactly what the number looks like that we need in order to field the team. I just talked to him this evening, and he's gonna find that out. We may, even with ESCO, be very close to not being able to field the team.
And I did see that there was something put out on the residents of Proctor, just to see, to encourage any kids that want to swim to join the team. But, I mean, we have two kids that want to. I'm hoping that this works out, that we can get enough to support these kids in keeping their team and support them.
We don't have any swimmers from Hermantown this year?
We do not. I don't think we'd co-op with Hermantown for the boys. It was just the girls, I thought.
Okay.
And, yeah, would that be an option?
I don't think so, because I think they have enough. And if they move, they would move up to the next...what's the word I'm looking for?
Class?
Class. So they probably wouldn't.
Yeah, there's a couple players in that. And one of them being titled, "You have to keep it even." So when we look at other school districts joining co-op, they have to be careful, we have to be careful on how we do that. Sorry, I know I wasn't looking into the mic.
Okay.
So they bring it back to the board maybe by the next meeting?
Hopefully, we'll know numbers by then.
Okay.
This is more, I guess, a heads up, because we kind of let them go ahead and at least talk to ESCO and get the ball rolling to see if it can happen. All right. Sounds good. Thanks for bringing, giving us the heads up, so that we aren't wondering what's going on with that as, you know, it gets back to our ears, you know. All right. And the season starts the 29th, is that what I...I mean, I know hockey starts next Monday, but cross-country skiing doesn't start till the end of the month. Do we know when the season opens?
I don't know off the top of my head. However, I think we can hold meets after we get this decided.
Got it.
And enter meets after we get it decided.
Got it. Okay. When's basketball start, so? Next week? Okay, so captain, is this...okay.
As in the...I think this is the high school newsletter that practice begins November 29th, so...
Thought that date stuck out. Thank you. Okay.
7 through 12, so it's a broad brush there. So hopefully, we can get some students out for that, big grid.
All right. We'll move on then to Public Relations Update. Items relating to the district from the Proctor Journal. There is highlights about the Adams Family production, October 28th edition. And our Student of the Week for October 28th was Jada Francisco. November 4th edition highlights Harnell, Bettendorf, and Knight qualifying for the state cross-country meet. And then Student of the Week was Amber Cadel. And the Proctor City Council proclaimed Girls and Boys Soccer Days. At their last city council meeting, they proclaimed Thursday, November 4th was the Girls Soccer Day, and Friday, November 5th was the Boys. I have that handout here from Steve, quick here. So very nice. Thank you to the City of Proctor for honoring our athletes. Okay, we'll move on to Reports then, item number 13. School Board Committee Reports. In your packet, you'll see the Staff Development Report, the Policy Committee Report, and Operations Committee Reports. Does anyone have any questions regarding Staff Development at all? Policy? Meet and confer took us...I'll just touch on operations. Took a while to get a date to meet, and it seems like some of those things had kind of self-corrected with some things that had taken place, just we added a different bus to our routes, which helped alleviate the late arrivals, in particular, technology concerns as we move forward with smart boards becoming obsolete. What's the plan to move forward? And so just touching base on that and just making sure that teachers are involved. Just a brief touch on substitutes and how we can make sure that our substitutes feel welcome and want to come back and part of our team. Back in 2020, right before the pandemic hit, we had really sat down and tried to offer a very nice substitute, I don't wanna say "package," but, you know, if you've subbed this many times, you know, there were certain things that we put in place, free lunch, I think, day pass to the fitness center. So some just different recruitment or kind of retention-type things that we had had in place. So just reminding everyone about that. Open houses and conferences, just talking about teacher contract hours imbalance and how we kind of make that happen. And then just the Superintendent Teachers just want to make sure that they're involved with whatever steps that they can be. We also just met regarding requests from employees who wanted to take unpaid leaves, just having a conversation about how the district might want to handle that if it comes up, so...that's about it. Any questions at all? Also, under Reports, you'll see the Enrollment Report for November 2021. Looks like we're hanging in there good, after the initial start fluctuations. Under Communications, School Board Comments and Observations. Would anyone like to start with a celebration of some sort?
I just got one. My nephew, who graduated just last year, just joined the Army last week, Jace Podgrun at Summery Polyam.
Great. Great to have some of our graduates doing some different things as they start the next school year that they're not in.
Yeah, he's down in Georgia, but then they got delayed now this week to start the training because of the COVID break through down there, so in Georgia. So now they're...he's bored. Yeah. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments and observations?
One thing I'll add, I should have shared this earlier in the first part of the agenda, but just aside about the drama department, I should make sure that I recognize Lois O'Leary from our staff, and Suzie Hartwick, and also Ted Keefat, who may or may not have played Lurch. So certainly, a lot of staff involvement went into that. And these kids, you mean the world to these kids, so thank you for all that you've done.
Lynn, anything from you when you're ready, if you have anything? No?
A day in the classroom always makes me a little bit happier.
Were you in the classroom today?
I visited.
Oh.
And it's...
Good.
I just think a day in the classroom is time well spent, and I've seen some, especially during book...oh, the book fair. Have I talked about how amazing the book fair was?
I don't think so. You were in the midst of it.
Have I mentioned it? Oh, my gosh. We sold more books this fall than we have ever sold, and we have a surprise coming up for all of our students in the spring, but I'm not gonna talk about it right now. But it was amazing, and I got to deliver books to some classrooms. Every time I went into a classroom, kids were engaged, they were learning, teachers were extraordinary. It was just a phenomenal week. I wish everybody could experience something like that. So, amazing. Awesome.
No, I don't. I don't, I don't think.
I'd just like to acknowledge our young runners, cross-country runners, and especially Noah Harnell. That was so awesome to see. Somebody brought it to my attention. Congratulations to him and the boss girl for running with him. That was very heartwarming. That was incredible.
And it was Annika, wasn't it?
It was Annika. And then the senior that was going, that had his medal prepared for him. Oh, I can't think of his name. Who had the medal for...he skis? Aiden, I was gonna say, Vance Ratten, yes. Yes, Aiden Vance Ratten was waiting for Noah at the finish line also. So without even knowing that, Annika had planned something very similar. But just, I just love when we have our older students looking out for our younger students. That's just so important. Such a good story. Thank you. All right.
Real quick question. Is there...was there a flu clinic that's coming up? John, did I see that at the schools?
Uh, flu chats are being offered for our employees.
Okay, okay, that's what it was. But I noticed it was at the different schools. That's great, thank you.
So just so everybody heard, McDonald's McTeacher Night tomorrow.
Time?
4 to 7.
Was it the Hamburglar?
So in other words...
So just to say it again, tomorrow, nobody needs to cook dinner, because from 4 to 7, you're gonna go to the Proctor McDonald's for McTeacher Night.
Is the lobby open or is it only drive-through? Do you know?
Both.
Both, okay. I didn't know if the lobby was open again. I don't know. Okay. Same.
Yeah, they're both open, but Rachel doesn't know I go there.
All right. We'll move on to Student Liaison, Board Member Comments. We'll start with Sophia.
Mike today.
Yep, pull it all the way closer to you.
Is this good? Okay, cool. Um, yeah, wow, this is weird. I get to go first. Hold on, I made notes, so...we did go to state for soccer, and that was a lot of fun. Not gonna lie to you, the food at the banquet was not good at all. Like, no, it was just not it. So we were starving the rest of the time. But it was a fun experience, for sure. And it was awesome that both teams got to go, like we said. And we did end up losing to the state champs, so we can say that, at least. Then tonight, there was an All-Star game, the Essential Health Area All-Star Game, and we had three players in it, Jaden Aleffson, Maisy Roweder, and Ava Bennett from Proctor, which was pretty cool. And then we had days named after us, which I didn't even know was a thing, except for my 15th birthday, when John named January 15th my, like, official day or whatever. That was my golden birthday. I still remember that in Ms. Harnell's classroom. You and my mom walked in, and I was like, "Oh, my goodness. This should be interesting." So, yeah, but that was a lot of fun to find out. I was not expecting that at all, so that was really cool. And other things that have been going on at the school, I did attend the Adams Family play twice, and it got better each time. And I did get to see Mr. Keefat, so that was a lot of fun to see. It was really good. They did an awesome job. I was telling Ms. Parmeter about it earlier, how, given the circumstances, they did amazing, and it was really fun to watch. I'd wanna say congratulations to the volleyball team on earning second place at sections. That was really cool for them. It's unfortunate, because that's not the goal they had for themselves, but they played hard, and, yeah, that was good. For student government, we have a lot going on. I can't say what yet, but we've been busy, so that's been fun. And then winter sports are starting, so we're just gonna keep getting busier. And, yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
How about you, Sydney?
I also did attend the play when, during the school day. And I've also attended some in the past, like, obviously, before COVID. And even some of the people I've seen grow so much, and I was just really proud of them, and they really enjoy it up there. And I was honestly, I was really happy with all the support and students that came and watched it as well. It was very cool to see, because, you know, a lot of people are busy on the weekends. There was a lot more sports going on, so I appreciated the chance of people getting the chance to see it during the school day. Yeah, student government, we have a lot going on, same as for NHS. We have our food drive coming up in the next few weeks, so we're doing like a little contest between all of the grades, and we're also gonna try to involve the elementary schools if possible with that. Our next blood drive is coming up in the beginning of December, so prepare for that if anybody wants to donate blood. And this is the point in time in the year where students start to get a little unmotivated because it's getting cold and people are getting sick, and it's just...but we still have a bunch of new exciting things coming up, like winter sports starting, and usually those bring us back together, supporting our classmates and all the teams. So we're all just working really hard and the best that we can, and we just had a checkpoint recently, so...and obviously, the holidays are coming up, so a lot more exciting things are about to happen for the students.
Thank you. Always great to hear from you guys. Item number 14C, Township and City Communications, anything to add, other than our road closure for the week that will be just the week? I've got nothing else. Does anyone else have anything to offer? Okay. All right, hearing none, we can move on to item number 15, which is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Joe can have it, I heard first, if that's okay. Don't wanna fight about it. All right. Does anyone have any questions about the adjournment before we adjourn?
Gotta give a...
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And meeting adjourns at 7:55. Thank you.
Who will our next generation be? What will they achieve?